We are back in session from our, our working session that just took place. I ask you to please stand for the pledge to the flag. Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Reading of the mission statement, "We are committed to academic achievement and success for all students in a safe environment. In partnership with families and our community, our mission is to promote confidence, inspire a passion for learning, and to prepare our students to become responsible global citizens." Is there an approval of the revised agenda? Motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there any update on questions or comments raised from interested citizens? There is no updates. And questions and comments from interested citizens, we have Mr. Troy Capin and Mr. Luca Vanderhorst, please.
Good evening, board members, Dr. Norman and administration. My name is Luca Vanderhorst and I am captain of the varsity football team as well as student council president. And I am here today with my teammate and fellow captain, Eric Greenberg. On behalf of the entire team, I want to thank you for your efforts and support in bringing back Friday Night Life. We are truly thankful for this change and your hard work.
This Friday, we are dedicating the first home game of the season to first responders and military personnel. We are inviting friends and family that worked in the military or are first responders to take the field with us for the National Anthem. We hope you all will be there on Friday night to support us. And lastly, we'd like to thank Dr. Norman for his service and extended invitation to join us for the National Anthem. We would be honored to have you on the sideline with us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Vanderhorst and Mr. Capin. Okay, next up, we have the ELL presentation by Mr. Kravitz and Mrs. Rincon Tomizawa.
Okay. Thank you for the opportunity to highlight and celebrate a group of our students and the work that our driven, intentional, child-centered staff do on a daily basis. This evening, myself and Ms. Rincon Tomizawa are going to provide a snapshot of our English language learners and our multilingual learners in Monroe Woodbury today. Our goal is to share information about our students, how we provide services, what drives our work, and the role we all play in meeting mandates and state standards. So our first slide is focused on the Blueprint for ELL Success, which you have a copy of in your folders in front of you. This blueprint is accessible on the stated website, and it's a document from the Office of Bilingual and World Languages. This blueprint is a roadmap for principles for leaders, teachers, policymakers, to ensure success from kindergarten until a student is ready for college and career readiness. And it focuses on eight principles that I will, or eight principles with key takeaways. The first principle is that as teachers and educators, we are all responsibility, we're all responsible for the success of our students who are identified as English language learners and multilingual learners. There's a role for our board members and our district leaders to ensure that the needs of our students are met. Instruction is to be great appropriate, rigorous, and aligned to standards. And districts also need to recognize that bilingualism and biliteracy are assets, something to be celebrated, something to be embraced, and as we work towards one of our overarching goals for our students, the seal of biliteracy, which is great for so many of our students. Thanks, board.
As a district, we value the diversity in our community. Districts and schools value all parents and families of multilingual learners and as partners in education, and we effectively involve them in the education of all of their children. Districts and school communities lever to the expertise of our bilingual teachers, our ESL teachers, our TESL teachers, to ensure that they are also the experts in the classroom and support personnel while increasing their professional capacities. The seventh principle includes that districts and school communities leverage Ls and multilingual learners' home language, cultural assets, and prior knowledge as an asset in the classroom, an opportunity for all of us to learn from each other and with each other. And finally, the eighth principle describes that districts and schools use diagnostic tools and formative assessment practices in order to ensure that English language learners and multilingual learners' content knowledge, as well as new and home language development is, you know, to inform instruction. And these are the things that we do on a daily basis. We make sure that our students not only have access to quality instruction, but that we use the right tools to ensure that we can have an understanding of the skills that they bring to the table and the skills that they need to work on so that they can access every learning opportunity that we provide in the district.
Embedded within that document is a reference to the Commissioner's Regulation sub-Part 154, commonly referred to as Part 154. And that basically says that it's our school district's responsibility to provide equal access to all school programs, all services offered commensurate with the student's age, grade level, including access to programs required for graduation. We cannot isolate students based on their identification as an English language learner. In addition, we're required to provide English language learners with either bilingual education or English as a new language programs. And we'll talk about that in just a little bit and what that looks like. One of...I started this presentation by saying that, you know, thank you for the opportunity to celebrate this one particular group of kids. The students are identified as English language learners and multilingual learners are to be celebrated. There's a student, a willing student who allowed us to speak with her. Her name is Paulina. I'm going to let you kind of tackle that.
So as mentioned, our students, like any other student who enters a school in the United States, particularly in New York, when they enter the school district, they go through a screening process. They're identified as Ls by a review of the records. They're given an assessment, they're interviewed, the family shares their history. And I had the pleasure of meeting Paulina Herrera. I had the opportunity to call her mother to tell her that, how impressed I was by her leadership last year when I met her at our after-school program for our Ls. And I watched her facilitate a conversation with our newly arrived Ls, many who speak Spanish and some who speak Haitian Creole. And she, as a former L who arrived here in 2022 with some English, facilitated a conversation about the importance of self-advocacy and how important it was to find your people, to find your adult, to find somebody that you can trust, and that it's okay to feel uncomfortable and it's okay to feel sometimes like you don't belong, but there is somebody out there that you could always find that will make you and help you feel that you belong here. And so I called Ms. Herrera and she said, "Thank you so very much." Paulina has always been somebody who, since she was little, never felt like it was okay to just accept no for an answer, and she always found a way to advocate for others. So I share with you a little bit about Paulina.
Tell us what were some of the biggest surprises when you came to the United States?
How fast people speak here, like maybe born here.
Sorry.
They speak really fast and maybe like in stores and that I struggled to like ask questions and stuff because also I felt a little bit like self-conscious about my accent too, but it was hard to understand people at first. Like I was always asking like, "Oh, can you repeat that, please?" Because I didn't catch some things.
What were some of the biggest challenges for you when you started school here in New York?
As I said, like the language, I knew English from Argentina. I had taken like private lessons, but still it was a struggle for me because I was talking to like Argentinian teachers that also learning English. But here, with people that were born here, it was very hard to speak sometimes, like even right now, I still, how's it called when...
Stutter?
Stutter. I still stutter sometimes because some words, you're still in the moment, you forget how to pronounce them. So that was a big part. And also like asking questions, whether it's in the classroom, outside with a teacher, the language, it's always a big part when you immigrate.
How did you overcome those challenges, or how are you still overcoming those challenges?
I'm just, the thing is just getting used to it. It's routine, it's every day listening to people. I'm better with the part of like understanding when people speak fast and that stuff, but sometimes when I'm tired or when I'm not in like a good mood, sometimes it gets difficult for me to pronounce things in English or to make myself clear. Like sometimes it's hard to get your point across when English is your second language, and you have times in which you speak really well and times in which you stutter and you go, like you regress on what you have learned. So what I'm doing is I'm just like accepting that I make mistakes. When speaking, don't get frustrated because it's life, you know?
What was easy for you?
Maybe just connecting with people, mostly like also English learners. That's why the program, it was like, when in place when everything is so new, just the comfort of knowing that some people speak your language, like your mother tongue, if that's how they call it, just that's a big comfort. And like in between the classes, you also push each other to like learn more English depending on each level, but that's, that was a big comfort, just getting people that are in the same situation as you and being able to empathize and people who understand what you're going through.
Talk to me about how your parents felt when you started school here, and did they feel they had support for you, and how did the school help them understand the kind of support that you were getting?
Well, the school counselors played a big role in this. They informed a lot to my parents. My parents were teachers in Argentina. My dad was like a counselor and my dad was, my mom was a teacher with like special needs kids. And they knew everything of the school system and colleges in Argentina. So here, everything was very new for them. They support me as best as they can, not pressure me with school or anything, but they are also like learning among with me, like how to handle things. About college is a very important part. That's why the interviews that you have with your counselor, like or like after-school planning, that plays a big role because it helped my parents a lot to understand how the system works here, like admissions, all that stuff, applying for colleges. So the school informations with the counselor, like things that plays a big role into getting informed.
What are your goals for this year?
Just like getting prepared with all my classes for college-level like material for my part, like being able to perform college-level, as I said, projects, essays, whatever, to be prepared for college. That's my main goal.
Great. So you'll graduate this year. You've learned a lot in your two years here.
Yeah.
What skills do you want to learn and what problems of the world do you want to solve as you move on in your learning journey?
I want to keep learning about how to communicate with people because that ultimately, like connections play a great role in life. I want to keep learning how to like, yeah, basically like speak to people, how to make, get my point across better, how to like keep myself from like stuttering or making those mistakes sometimes. That's my main goal, to deepen my connections, to being able to get more connections with people, to just get to know people around me, you know, just make everyday contact be easier. I know I said people a lot and connections a lot, but that's my main goal. I want to just, I want to be a children psychologist. So that's my main goal. I want to help children mostly. I just, like your childhood plays a great role on the person you become. It literally is the base of everything, and what you learn in childhood is very difficult to change, to adjust. So that's an essential part of life. It basically like can predict your journey like on adulthood. So I think it's very good and important to preserve that part of life and keep it as healthy as possible. And I know some children, sometimes they don't have that chance of having a healthy childhood. So I just want to help to change that because it's everything.
Tell us what were some of the biggest surprises when you came to the United States?
So our English language learners in Monroe Woodbury represent 28 countries and speak 24, 22 languages. Our Ls in the United States are a diverse group, according to data from the U.S. Department of Education during the 2019, 2020 school year, approximately 20, 76% of Ls in K-12 public schools spoke Spanish as their primary language.
I'm sorry, are you saying Ls?
English language learners.
Oh, like the Ls.
The Ls, yes, sorry. English language learners spoke Spanish as their primary language in 45 of the 50 states, followed by Arabic and Chinese. In five states, Alaska, Minnesota, Vermont, Hawaii, and Montana, they had another language as their primary languages. Were the only five states for whom Spanish was not their primary language for English language learners. So that, just to give you an idea of the demographic of the English language learner in public schools in the United States in 2019, 2020.
And Paulina is an example, but there are many, many other student stories. And I think one of the things that she focused on, as much as anything else, was the importance of connections and those relationships with people, which in conversations with her are really what made the difference in her success.
Absolutely.
Principle eight from, from the Blueprint for Success focused on assessment and screenings. So students have access to all our curriculum, but New York State identifies students through a screening process called the NICE-ATL. It's an acronym for New York State. It's, well, it's long. And that's what we use to identify the command of English language. But there are different levels within the ELL, within our ELL students that receive different types of supports. So we're just going to walk you through those four types of, or five types of supports.
So the chart in front of you explains, gives you an idea of the level of, of language command that a student can, and how long it takes for a student to command the English language. I could tell you as a second language learner myself, it did just take a long time to, to command English. At the same time, you're developing your basic interpersonal skills in language as well as your academic skills. So when you come to school, you have to use all parts of your brain to figure out what they're talking about and what you know about what they're talking about, while at the same time, figure out how to socialize and how to use all that language. And it can take a while. Sometimes you go through your silent period. It takes about zero to six months. So at the entering level, you experience that quiet moment. And then you go on to the emerging and transitioning, expanding, and commanding level. It can take up to seven years for an English language learner to have full command of the English language. And as you could see, you know, for somebody like Paulina who had some experience with English before she arrived in the United States, picking up English and commanding it to a degree where she's taking college-level classes and participating fully in, you know, has gained and achieved commanding in the NICE-ATL, which is the other assessment our students take, has allowed her to really move on and command that level of English. And that's our, our hope for our students is that not only do they reach commanding, but that they have the ability to achieve biliteracy in both their native language and in English, that they're able to not only have those skills, but also compete in a global market.
I mean, she used her tenses like amazing, so very impressive.
Absolutely.
Okay. One of the things that just on this, on this slide is the importance of academic language. So building a student's capacity for, for basic conversational English is one focus, but to have that entire group or student body really understand that academic language, which is, is different, right? Different words, different terminology, the importance of, of putting that in at the forefront of their, of their learning is paramount. So when they're pulled out, and we'll talk about what some of the services are, that academic language is over and over and repeated and repeated.
And our goal in our program is to be able, in our programs, is to be able to support our students, meet them where they are with the skills they bring to the table, while also ensuring that we have the appropriate programs to be able to support that and that our teachers have the appropriate tools to be able to support the curriculum and support the students in that, in those programs.
So understanding where we were and where we are and where we're going is an important component for, just for, for all of you. These numbers are taken from the last month of every school year for the last five years. You'll notice 220, that was right before we shut down for COVID, so that was the last set of numbers that we had. At that time, we had 372 students within the, within the four acquisition levels, entering, emerging, transitioning, and expanding. We did also have additional students who were commanding. Our commanding students are on here, so you can see them in terms of numbers, but it's important to know that they get services or support as needed. Those students, when we'll get right into the next, next phase, when we talk about entering, there are students who get serviced. They receive services for 36 minutes a day, and there are another groups of students who receive up to 72 minutes of, of daily instruction. So we'll talk about that. But what you could see is in, in 2020, we had, 372 is the number I'm going to start with, 372 students who are identified as Ls. The following year, we grew, and we grew. Last year, or this past year, in June, we had 779 students who were identified as Ls. So as you can see, over 400 student increase in those, those years. That's a large number. And with that comes additional need, staffing, support, services. And our ENL teachers can't do it all by themselves. And what happened is a lot of the onus falls on the general ed classroom teacher, who may not have ever had, you know, a lot of experience with our, our new Ls. So it's been our job to try and support that, and we'll talk about ways that we've, we've started to do that. So those are by the numbers.
What, the last two rows, columns, what are they?
So those are inclusive, oh, sorry, 2023 was...
I'm asking, it says COMM1.
Commanding 1 and commanding 2. So those are students who have taken the NICE-ATL, and when you take the NICE-ATL, you achieve commanding level. When you reach commanding, you no longer receive direct instruction in ENL, but you still are entitled to accommodations from the state, right? It's part of regulations, bless you, for two years. And so it's still considered a service, but there, you're not being pulled out for that service. And the ENL teacher, along with, you know, your other teachers can, you know, seek your support of the ENL teacher. It's kind of like an unsaid rule. There's 90 minutes that some students might need of support, but it's not a direct pullout. And so those supports look different depending on the needs of the student. After two years, you no longer receive those accommodations.
And you'll see two zeros up there. The reason for that is there was no NICE-ATL given in 2020 because of COVID. So that was zero. There were no new commanding students. And the second year, with those, all those students, because it moves up year by year, there were still zero students the following year I was commanding to.
Almost 780 students today in the district that do not have command of English.
Correct.
Correct.
That, well, this was as of June. And I mean, I can point out, as of today, right now, our numbers, the reason I did is I wanted one timestamp from every year, which is why we, we had that June number. As of today, the number stands at four, at 763 versus the 779, and 887 versus 927. However, we had students graduate, we had students leave, and currently, we have 131 students who are slated to be screened. So, and they're supposed to be, they're screened from, we have, the countries represented are Honduras, Guatemala, Peru, Dominican Republic, Ecuador, Haiti, Mexico, Israel, Colombia, India, Turkey, Africa, China, Venezuela, and then we have 53 students from within the United States who also need to be screened.
And they're not just new entrants at the beginning of the school year, it's a continuous...
Correct. Some of them are coming from other school districts, some of them are...
All year long.
All year long, right?
Yeah, so we saw last year growth just from September through January of, of over 100 students.
So how do you anticipate the staffing needs based on that pattern?
We continuously monitor. We continuously monitor.
If you don't know what's coming, you don't know what's coming.
You don't know what's coming. We have other school districts, you know, every month I meet with the Office of Bilingual Education and the local directors, and we hear the stories of, you know, we had 200 kids or, you know, showed up this week. We pray that that's not the case for us, but it happens. And so they pivot very quickly, and they do their best to hire teachers and, you know, work with the state to, you know, work on grievances, the state, not grievances, to, to, you know, get some accommodations and support. The state had a supplemental certification that they put out last year for a year, allowing teachers to seek an extension on their supplemental certifications, allowing teachers three years to get an extension on their certification for TESL. So they're doing their best to also help school districts find ways to, to get teachers to get extensions.
What's TESL? What was that acronym?
Teachers of, teachers of, goodness, I get all my acronyms all messed up. Teachers of students of other languages.
So is there a, some sort of communication system between the school district and state agencies?
So we'll, we'll talk about that just a...
Where people are moving into an area and school districts sort of get that, hey, you're going to have an X number of students. You're not being caught in a situation where you just don't have enough resources to deal with it?
No, we don't have a, a direct pipeline that says, hey, you're going, right, you're going to have this number of students and your, your district at a given time.
We're in a position to pivot quickly enough to be able to accommodate?
That's the question.
Yeah. So, A, we don't have a choice, right? We have to, a lot of it comes through, we have to work with Lori and, and, you know, the HR team. One of the issues, the realistic issues is, we're not the only district who's in this boat. There are a lot of districts around here who are in similar, are similar boats.
No, but our boat.
Part of it is hiring, part of it is educating and working with our staff to give as many supports as possible. The, right?
Correct. We try to, a couple of things, we try to stay on top of the trends. Our conversations, at least my conversations with the Associate Commissioner, are more about what are, what are we seeing, especially in New York City? That's usually our first line of defense. What is New York City seeing in terms of...
I think that's what you were asking.
Migration patterns. And then, that's, yep, so that's usually the first.
I'm kind of projecting.
I thought, I thought you were saying specific to us.
No, no, I mean, projections to understand what's coming.
So usually that's, that's where we hear the, you know, sort of what's happening at the ground level. Once we're that, I usually share that information with cabinet, and that's been able to make some changes. Last year, we knew that there were some, there was a pattern of, of migration north. I mean, Peekskill saw that move much faster than we did, Austenning as well, and we, we saw that coming our way. So we had some additional hires this year for the high school. So we were able to pivot on time. Last year, we were scrambling to hire halfway through the year because we had more students than we could accommodate in our program. And, you know, we, we definitely, I think, made the right choice to be prepared for the students this year. And it's just about staying connected to, to the people in New York City to see what they're seeing because we know that people, you know, will follow patterns.
So, I mean, the question, the natural continuation of the question is, how expendable are we? I mean, is the system, how much system can handle? And are we at the max? Are we at 80% of what we can handle? 90% of what we can handle?
110.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's, how, how upgradable are we?
I think a lot of it depends on the need... I, I think a lot of it depends on the needs of the students, the, what levels they're at, and let me just kind of shift here one second. And the reason I put this up is, this is, again, from June, uh, the end of June of this past year, where the number of entering and emerging students receive, all those students receive seventy-two minutes a day of, of daily instruction. So, a lot of it is based on minutes and how you can fit in, you know, every student to get, you know, serviced. The second two columns, transitioning and expanding, those students are required to receive thirty-six minutes a day. So, that's how, you know, it's usually typically one period.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna interrupt you for a second. I don't quite understand. So, thirty-six versus seventy-two minutes of what kind of instruction?
Of English language.
So, what do they do for the rest of the day?
They're in their general classrooms.
In general classrooms, not understanding a word.
They do, no, they do. They have support, some of our students.
I was, I was there, I, 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 that's why I'm asking.
I believe you. I was, I was there too, absolutely.
Right.
And our, our students have, have support. Um, there are other scaffolds that teachers provide. Um, our students, and one, one of the things that we stress to our staff is that our students have the ability to engage in content. One of the things that you'll see as we move on through the presentation is, our goal for this presentation is to share some of the things that we're doing to prepare, but also the things that we have done and things that we're gonna be doing moving forward to ensure that we are not only ready for tomorrow, but ready for what's to come, right? Because we don't know how quickly, we, other districts have experienced, uh, you know, two busloads at a time. We're not prepared for three busloads of students. Uh, we are prepared for, you know, another forty kids, another sixty kids, uh, we're not prepared for four busloads.
That was my question.
Um, and, and that's, I think any district will be able to tell you that. We are not ready for that. We are planning this year, and at the end of the, at the end of the year, last year, we plan to continue to work with the ARBURN, the Regional Bilingual Education Network, to provide professional development to our staff. Um, that's been the work that we've done this year, um, along with the rollout of the new reading program, to be able to continue to ensure that our staff have the right tools to roll out that curriculum, um, and that they have the materials that they need so that our students can access that content. Um, and that goes across the board at the secondary level. We're also ensuring that our hires are teachers who are duly certified, and that was a conscious effort that we made so that our students have access to teachers that are able to support them in the content, and that our general ed teachers have other professionals. Again, that we're leveraging the expertise of teachers, um, of English language learners to be able to support them in the differentiation of that curriculum, both at the secondary level as well. So, we're working to address those needs. Are we a hundred percent ready? Nope. I don't think there's a single school district that can say they're a hundred percent ready for every student or three busloads.
And we don't have, do we have any summer prep courses for, for students who, let's say, are about to start and...
You're jumping the gun on my presentation.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
Yeah, in addition to students being pulled out for ELL, do we have any teachers that push in?
Mm-hmm. Yes. That's the other slide.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
They're all great questions.
They're all great questions.
Sorry.
No, no, they are. So, these, these next three slides focus on three groups of people, students, um, staff, and families, and the idea of meeting students where they are. One of the, um, things that Dr. Koifman just asked were, were about summer programs and, and the like. So, some of these things, more than just our, our, our students identified as Ls receive. You know, if we have kids who are struggling readers or, or struggling in math, regardless of whether or not they're identified as an L, they're gonna find a home in small, in terms of small group instruction. It's typically our A I S program. Co-teach opportunities, there are co-teach opportunities for, um, some of our Ls, there are also co-teach opportunities for some other kids who have, who might be identified with, with other sets of, of needs. Dual language class, we are required by State Ed that, once we have a, a certain number of students, um, within, within a grade level, speaking the same language, we have to offer a dual language or a bilingual class. We, we met with the state, so, we met with, um, Lisa Alvarez, who is the Associate Commissioner of Education in New York State. She came to our district in March, and the point of her visit was a sit-down to just say, hi, what, I, I've noticed your numbers, you know, are increasing. What's going on? What do you need? How can we support you? Which was very different than most of my experience with State Ed. You know, to have someone at that level of State Ed say, who knew our numbers, who could tell you, I know you have this number of emerging kids in this grade, and I could tell you their NICE SLAT scores or their, their nice-to-tell scores, she knows her stuff. But that was the point of her meeting. Um, she's coming back, she'll be back here, and we'll talk about that on the next slide.
You said when the number reaches a certain level, you're required, what, what's that number?
Twenty.
Twenty of the same language?
Twenty students on the same grade level who speak the same language.
But they also encourage us to just start small. They don't say you have to do it for every single grade level and every single kid at the same time. So, this is our first real year of having a, a bilingual, uh, classroom. We started at Smith Clove, we started with our young ones, and then the goal would be to build that up.
How does it, how does it work? I mean, the class is being conducted in a foreign language?
So, that's called a, that's a one-way program? There are different types of bilingual classrooms, that's, that's a one-way program.
It's a dual language, one-way dual language class.
So, the, the, the teacher in the class is bilingual, she's working towards a certification as, as a bilingual teacher, so she, she teaches kids both in English and in Spanish.
I see.
Okay, there are other programs in other districts who have, um, you know, a two-way program where they may take, you know, two classes of kids. Half the kids in one class speak Spanish and the other half speak English, and they, for example, will be taught week ones, you know, lesson one. And the other class, who's also half Spanish-speaking and half English-speaking, will also learn lesson one in English. And then they flop, uh, flip-flop the following week where they get lesson two in the language that they didn't get the, the following week.
So, you're teaching non, non-Spanish speakers also another language?
Right. Other districts have started to do that, and that's, you know, that's a, a conversation to, and, and it goes back to one of the principles in, um, the blueprint, which is embracing bilinguality and bilingualism. And we oftentimes, you know, struggle. Kids come here and we say, hey, you have to learn English because you don't know English. And then, when they get into high school, we say, you need to go learn another language, and we celebrate that, and that's great, and that's where the seal of bilinguality is really, um...
So, and again, logistically, the class has both primary English speakers and non-primary.
In that, in that model, which we do not have at this time, they, they do.
In the model we do have, are the students looping with that teacher, or do we have enough teachers that they can...
They'll be looping.
Okay.
This is our first go-around, so we are baby steps with some good guidance, working through it.
I think Mr. Escobar has a question.
Yeah, um, I just want to clarify something. Um, so, just as a student, I think that the best tool that other students have are other students to help you with anything. So, is there any, like, plan in place for, say, someone who is like an intermediate level to be in the same classroom as someone who is a newcomer, and they can sort of help each other out in a way? And I think that would benefit, you know, everyone to lessen the load that we have right now, because clearly, there's a problem with how much we can expand, so that could assist. I'm just wondering if there's anything like that in place right now.
We do, we have that. We, we make sure that all of our students, especially our transitioning and expanding students, and students that are at those levels, spend as much time in their classrooms with their peers, that they are, they're all learning the same content. Um, it's a matter of making sure that they have the right tools and the skills, language-wise, to be able to self-advocate when they're in those classes, um, especially at the high school level. We, you know, they all take art, they take, you know, math classes, and we mentioned...
I think you're asking if there's somebody outside of that program that would pair up with, uh, uh, one of the English language learners, like a mentor or Big Brother, Big Sister type.
Like one who's expanding for someone who's coming in as emerging.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Not, not in that mentor piece, but that's a conversation that we're having with the...
So, what does the newcomer program mean?
So, the newcomer program...
Want me to start?
Go ahead.
So, the newcomer program was something that was developed a, a number of years ago, and some of you were still, you know, were on the board at, at the time. It began at the high school, and it was our response to students who came here, um, who often had interrupted formal education. So, it wasn't as if they just, a student, you know, struggled with, with, or didn't understand, um, how to speak English. They came here and there were, you know, if they were fifteen years old, they may not have been in school for a certain amount of time prior to getting here. So, it wasn't just coming here and getting them to speak the language, it was also getting here, coming here, learning the culture, learning the language. Um, and oftentimes, there was, there, there were other layers to the supports that they needed. So, the newcomer program, as it stands, there was, we have them in, in elementary, um, K-1, two-five middle school and, and high school. The, they're currently housed in individual buildings. North Main, for example, has the newcomer program at, um, uh, as far as the two-fives. And as students come, if they are brand-new to the country and they fit the, the criteria that, that had been predetermined, then the goal is to be in that program and get them out of that program so that they can be in, you know, our, our, our general classes with their, their, their peers.
Right. So, that's what the program looks like, and they're receiving English, you know, the same content, same curriculum, just with additional support from a teacher who is, um, certified to provide that language support.
And I know you said that there's this dual-language class model that we don't have in our district yet. Do you have like a timeline, uh, in terms of when you think that we could, um, have something like that?
Well, I think it's a big, I think it's a bigger conversation than just here. I think it's a conversation, obviously, with our, our cabinet, and, and there's a philosophical component, right? And then there's a financial and, and budgetary component where all, everybody else would, you know, kind of come in. But it's something that we would have to continue to have a conversation about, so I don't have a specific timeline about that. Thank you for asking that. So, meeting staff where they are, um, I, I, the staff here in this district for years and years, and it continues today, um, I think one of the, there are many great assets is, they care about our kids. They will, they will do what they need to do to help our, our students. And I know that some of them have at times felt, you know, how, I just want to help, I just want to help this kid. How, how can I better help this, this, you know, student in front of me? And it's our job to try to give them, you know, what they need. One of the ways of doing that is working with, um, the ARBURN, and that is the professional development arm of the New York State Ed Office of Bilingual and World Languages. They, they support, they're a regional support network, so they support every district here. Um, and every district has different needs. We met with them in, in April, and, um, we were going through some of our, our concerns, and they said, oh, hold on, and we just got off the phone with a district upstate who was really nervous and, you know, uncertain about how to, um, work with their L population, because they just got their first student identified as ELL in their district. Um, and the district was, they, they kept saying, oh, my gosh, we don't know what to do, don't know what to do, because we have this one, this one student. So, their, their range of influence works from the very small need to, to much larger needs. They're primarily a professional development network. Going through the Office of Bilingual Education and World Languages, as I, I mentioned, they came to us, they called us, and they said, what can we do?
Why? Why did they call us?
Because they looked at the numbers, our, our numbers and our increase in numbers, so, you know, which they felt happened very quickly, and they said, okay, what can, what, what do you need? So...
What did they offer?
Well, they offered to come back. Um, so, there, that, it's part of the upcoming visits, it's part of the upcoming visits piece. They, oftentimes, what happens with, particularly with our students who are identified as, as English language learners, sometimes they present similarly, or sometimes they present differently to other students who may have, um, identified needs. You know, there, and there's, it can be challenging to distinguish between a student who is in their, their English language acquisition journey and a student who, um, really does need more support in terms of moving towards the, the, the special education curriculum. So, what they offered was to come here, um, they're gonna be here in, in September, and visit, visit a number of our schools and talk with some of our staff. It would be the Associate Commissioner of Education for the Bilingual Ed and World Languages, and the Assistant Commissioner of, of Special Education. So, they'll be here in tandem, because that was why they were coming, and...
And they, their, their goal is to understand how policies of State Ed impact school districts like ours, who have a growing number of Ls, um, and fully understand how, not only policies impact us, but what can they do differently so that we are able to meet the needs of, of our students and fully understand really what it means when they, you know, share policy. One of the things that we, uh, talk about, um, a lot in recently, and we're hoping that, you know, they change some of their practices is our, we have students who are English language learners and are also, um, students with, um, I, with disabilities who take the alternative assessment for special education. Well, those students are also required to take the NICE SLAT, which students who don't have I E Ps have to take, and it's a very difficult exam, and it's the exam you have to take to exit, um, as an English language learner. But there's no alternative for students with disabilities. Um, and so, that's been a big push, um, you know, I'm sure Dr. Morales can share, she's been in this seat before, and that, I'm sure has been a conversation even since when she was in this seat. And, um, there's definitely some inequities in those policies about assessment, and those are the pieces that we talk about often. It's like, what can we do so that our students have an opportunity to show how much they know and what they can do? Um, and so, that's, that's their, they currently travel together to see how policies of special education and, um, English language learning, um, learners impact school districts.
And additionally, we're a member district of, um, the Tri-State Consortium, which is a group of districts from around, uh, the tri-state area. Thus the name Tri-State Consortium. What we've, a number of us have been trained, they come in, and it's our turn this year, we go to other districts, members of us will go and we'll sit on a team or a panel where a district has identified, uh, an area of need, and that panel within, you know, that newly formed panel, will go and provide support and do a full, you know, an, analysis of, um, areas of opportunity and, you know, where they're currently performing. This year is our third year within the consortium, consortium, um, so it's our turn to, to host a, a panel, and our focus for this year is going to be the, uh, the students with, um, interrupted formal education or SIF students at, uh, at the high school level. It is an, an area that we feel we need, could use continued support with and, and additional ideas. That was one area where New York State, when they came to visit, said, wow, you have, you have a lot of students that fall within that, um, that grouping, so...
I have a question, um, does any of this professional development get our teachers certified to be able to teach in a bilingual class? And are we offering any incentive for our staff and teachers to do that? Because in the regional area, this is not a Monroe-Woodbury issue, this is a regional, there's growth in, in this whole region, there's gonna be a talent shortage at some point. So, what are we doing to prepare our staff?
And that's a great ques- and that's a question that we've had at, at our cabinet level, to try to figure out how to, you know, do we grow our own? Do we, you know, offer incentives? How, how do we approach that? But we don't have a, a firm hears exactly what we're doing with, with some of our own staff.
Okay. And, and none of these are getting us to that ultimate end goal?
No, these are, these are supporting you while you have students sitting in front of you, but...
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. And the last thing is, um, the ARBURN has suggested that we, we provide our staff with a professional needs assessment, and that will occur this year. It'll be a survey about where they feel that they, they need, and the ARBURN will be supporting us with that. And then there's families.
Say that again?
The ARBURN has recommended that we provide a, a needs assessment for our staff to, to, The ARBURN has recommended that we provide a, a needs assessment for our staff to, to, you know, a survey, um, so we can determine best practices and what they, they need.
And when is that happening?
That happens, I think, I want to say-
It'll happen this year?
Yeah, I want to say March.
It happened?
They're basically just coming and collecting a bunch of data, but they're not actually offering up any specific resources at this time. It's really just them coming to see how we're managing with these populations, how, what the staff might need.
And making recommendations about best practice so that we can then say, okay, here's what New York State is recommending that we do. New York State doesn't come in and say, hey, you have a growing number of any type of student. Here's, you know, we're, we're cut, you know, whipping out the, the checkbook for you. It doesn't, you know, that'd be great, but that's not how it works.
So it's really just assessing. They're coming in to assess to see basically how Monroe Woodbury is doing with us.
And although this is happening in March, we have conversations with building administrators and department chairs about what are the needs of staff throughout the year. So we are, we work with the ARBURN throughout the year to make sure that we are curating professional development for staff. So those are ongoing conversations. So even the ARBURN kind of has a lot of reach. You know, they service a hundred and forty-five school districts, but they have learning specialists that have very particular, um, expert, areas of expertise. So we're able to tap into those, you know, particular individuals for, you know, anything related to technology or processes. So as those needs, you know, arise, we're able to, to tap, um, into that free resource.
And the last area is, is meeting families where they are. Last year we held a, a, a family engagement event and our goal is to increase that up to four family engagement events this year. Communication has, and Julissa had spoken about the, the numbers in terms of different languages. One of the things that we, we just got, uh, in the Ed Center, we were using in our registrar's office is this device called Pocket Talk. And what it does is it's a direct, direct translator that supports, um, our registrar, registrar who may not speak a particular language. And it's not just translating to Spanish or it, it, I don't know.
It's a two-way translator.
Fifty to plus languages.
It's a device. It, it kind of looks like-
It's not a service that you call.
No. So it's kind of, it's, it kind of looks like an iPod if you look at the image and it's a two-way translator. So you're able to have a conversation with someone, um, press the button, ask a question.
Sounds like something straight out of Star Trek.
Pretty much. Yes.
Well, we use that, we use that in the hospitals.
Yes.
Patients who do not speak English, there's a service that you call and they will translate.
Yes.
We do, we do have district translators who have been board approved at, at various board meetings. You'll often see that. We also have languages that we may not have, um, a physical translator for.
Why exotic languages? Languages are not very prevalent.
Correct. So we, we do use, um, a service called the Language Bank when, when needed. Uh, you know, this past year we had, I'll say eight, six hundred meetings or instances where, uh, throughout the district we needed a translator. And those were either in person or through the use of the Language Bank. So our goal was really to make sure that we had, uh, ways to communicate with families. Even though the majority of our students speak Spanish, we do have a growing number of Haitian Creole families, um, Ukrainian, Russian families that were, we don't have staff at the ready who speak those languages in every building. And so we wanted to make sure that we had a meaningful way of communicating with them. Um, and so these Pocket Talk devices will be available, um, in the districts in the coming weeks.
Coming days.
And I'm sorry, coming days in the building, sorry.
Or any other, any questions?
Probably have a lot, but we'll, we'll get back to you.
Yeah, please do, and then we'll certainly-
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Okay.
Okay. Next we have the approval of minutes from August twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. Uh, approval of committee charters. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Area nine director of the New York State School Boards Association nomination for Mr. John Williams. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Aye.
Motion carries. For personnel, Ms. Hock.
Thank you. I'd like to ask the board for approval for the items listed on the personnel this evening.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Business and financial, Mr. Cahill.
Uh, thank you. I respectfully request approval of the business and financial items, um, number eleven point one through eleven point four.
Any questions? Motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Committees on special education and preschool, special education. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then report by our student representative of the Board of Education, Mr. Escobar.
Good afternoon, everyone. I hope you're doing good. Hope you guys have had a good day. Uh, I just want to give some information about what I've been up to and what I plan to do coming into this year. So I haven't done much so far, you know? Really just started. But, um, I had a great meeting with Ms. Spendly today and, um, we covered a lot of what I'll be doing. We've set up meetings with the building principals. Uh, I devised a little schedule for myself on what my agendas for each month are going to be with some room to be flexible about if I need to change things around, if there's something important that happens, uh, room to change things as the year goes on. And then aside from that, uh, I shot a promotional video that I'm hoping to have completed soon and sent to the social medias for approval. And just to, uh, into this like second half of September, I hope to, you know, spread my name around a little more the district and really get students to engage with what I want to do. I want to make sure to represent, uh, some of the underrepresented people in our district who may not fill out that Google form or may not, you know, be as inclined to participate in certain activities because they have things going on. Uh, I want to make sure I'm tapping into that group of people that, um, can sometimes get a little lost in the shuffle. So that's all I have for today. Uh, next time I'll come back with a little more hopefully, but, uh, thank you guys so much for this time to speak and, uh, have a great rest of your guys' day.
Thank you, Dylan. Okay. Next is, uh, reports by Board of Education committees. Mr. Siriello for audit.
Um, there are some proposed audit dates. I did not bring those with me.
Would you like me to read them?
Please.
Okay. So, um, we sent out an email with four tentative dates. Uh, they are Wednesday, October twenty-third, Wednesday, January fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, Wednesday, March twenty-sixth, and Wednesday, June-
So I believe we're just waiting on the time confirmation, correct?
Yeah, yeah. We were, we were saying early, some folks like eight AM, some folks like five PM. So we're, we're trying to come to an accommodation on that.
We'll get you those responses.
Perfect.
By tomorrow.
Shortly.
The auditors are here for two weeks, so, uh, it's going well so far.
Excellent.
Yep.
Okay. Ms. Donahue for a policy?
Yeah, uh, we met the other day and we decided on dates for our meetings. Moving forward, we will be meeting on the second Tuesday of every month at eight thirty AM, right here at the Ed Center. And these meetings are open to the public. You are welcome to join us and we are awaiting more information from the state on, uh, their audit of our policy book.
Thank you. Mr. Reynolds for visitation?
Uh, our first meeting is Monday, the twenty-third of September in the afternoon at, uh, Pine Tree, I believe. And then the dates should be on the calendar as well. So we look forward to our first, uh, code out out of Pine Tree.
Okay. Mrs. McClery for Capital Project?
Um, same. We have our meetings are up on the website. They have already been scheduled. Our first one is, I believe, Thursday, the twenty-sixth of September at five PM.
Okay. We haven't attended the, uh, Orange County School Board Association meeting as of yet, but we will start in October, so no update on that. Okay. And we are, reports by board and central office. So, Mr. Kravitz?
Thank you. And I'll make this quick since you've heard enough from me. Welcome back to everyone, our students and staff. This week marked the beginning of our, uh, implementation of our new reading program, which whenever you implement, um, something of, of this size, it, it, it never goes with, you know, it's, there's always a hitch. But our staff is, like I said earlier, is incredibly professional and our job is to work with them and get them what they need, um, so they can help our kids. One of the benefits and the highlights of this program, as I discussed in, in the spring, was the idea of, of a continuity from, from school to school and class to class and grade to grade, um, in addition to common language and common vocabulary that we feel is really, really important and a focus on foundational skills that, um, that our students need to become better readers. Secondly, um, obviously today was, is nine eleven. Um, our schools recognized, um, this tragic day throughout the district today in a variety of ways, from morning announcements to library displays to, uh, songs that were played. And they, that day is always incredibly important to do that. So even though we have no students who were, um, alive on that day, it's, it's incredibly important. Followed up by next week, which is Constitution Day for, um, for a little more, more action regarding, uh, a number of things. Open houses have begun. We, we've done a number of them throughout the district. That's a wonderful way for parents to come in and learn, um, and get information about the year ahead for their students. I encourage everyone to show up. There's a lot of information that's presented, especially because you get FaceTime with your child's teacher or someone they're going to be spending a lot of time with over the course of the year. Thank you, everybody, for asking your questions during that presentation. I, I, I appreciate it. I know, um, Ms. Rinco and Tomizawa does as well. Um, I just want to point out, Dylan, thank you for asking your question. And then following up with what you just said, um, wanting to lift up those who are underrepresented is, um, it's, it's a, it's an important thing. And, um, there's, there's wisdom at times, you know, in the young. And, uh, I just want to point that out and let you know, I appreciate it. Thank you.
That's pretty long.
Sorry. I'm done.
It's okay.
I'll be a little more brief. With the start of the school year, I just wanted to acknowledge and thank our education support professionals and the buildings, grounds, transportation, food service and safety departments for all their work in getting us ready for the school year and getting us off on the right foot. Uh, these folks clean and maintain the schools, transport students safely to school, feed our students nutrition, nutritious meals and help maintain an orderly and safe school environment where students can learn and thrive. So big thanks again to all those folks. And, uh, with that, I hope everyone has a nice evening.
Dr. Vias?
Today's day six for our students, um, and it's exciting to have the kids and, 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 and support staff come back. Big shout out to our teachers, administrators and support staff welcoming the kids, um, with a, with a big arms and open hearts, um, and be especially patient with the technology and its support. School Messenger, uh, we are only thirty-seven percent, um, opt-in, so please, this applies to the staff as well. So if you want to receive that message, please make sure you opt-in, um, along with, uh, all the parents. You have to just use, um, the, the text message Y two seven five eight seven. Please, please do so. It's an open house season. Um, I had a, um, I attended Smith Sapphire and North Main Open Houses. Administrators and teachers did a fantastic job, um, welcoming the parents, um, with some kids, um, and going over with what the entire school year looks like for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Hassler?
Certainly I agree with everybody. I, I don't know if it's, it's been the weather, but it's, it's been a spectacular start. The weather has been unbelievable. Like, um, it's nothing better than opening up school with like mild temperatures and fall like, so it's been great. Thank you to everybody. Congrats to the new staff appointed tonight. I echo what Matt said about open house and, 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 and Bargonoff. It was great hearing from the representatives from the football team. We're very excited about our, our first, uh, Friday night game this year, which is Friday night. Just a reminder to everybody to please, please register for your tickets. Um, we have a process in place, same as last year's game where you need to register in advance. Bracelets will be distributed at the game. Um, you know, it's just an opportunity for us to make sure that we have, uh, a, a, a great, safe environment for everybody and build on the success that we had last year. So hopefully see everybody Friday night. Again, weather looks awesome. Thanks.
Ms. Hock?
Thank you. First, I'd like to extend a wonderful welcome back to Brian Judeece. Brian is back as an assistant principal at the high school. I'd also like to welcome and congratulate Shannon Witherby. Shannon Witherby is a Monroe Woodbury graduate who will now be teaching, um, at North Main Elementary School. Additionally, um, with the opening of school comes tons of opportunities for our students. So I want to encourage our students and encourage our parents to encourage their children to participate in as many school activities as possible. Co-curricular, extracurricular, um, students who are successful are very typically the students who are connected to their school community. Um, so we have tons of opportunities here at Monroe Woodbury. Join something. If it's not, uh, a sport or drama or the band, there are tons of clubs for you to participate in, find something. And I think I echo, echo the words that were already mentioned this evening, find your people and get yourself connected. And finally, along those lines, Eric and I had the opportunity to be judges in a public speaking competition, uh, that the football team participated in. And it was very entertaining, but also very impressive. And what they did was they had, uh, they were learning life skills. So again, I'm going to bring that back to your connection to the school, the activities you participate in. These kids were learning to tie a tie. Uh, they were doing public speaking. Uh, what were some of the other ones that they did?
My dogs are better than cats.
There were, there were some really good ones, but there, they learned CPR. There were a lot of additional life skills and-
Favorite food. I think one was like my, like my, their favorite family food.
But opportunities are there, folks. Join and, um, find your people.
Thank you.
Sorry if that was too long.
No, it's okay. Ms. Novak?
Um, just wanted to say thank you for the great presentation tonight. It wa, it was really helpful to see those numbers and, and hear more about what the, the school district has planned, um, to help our Ls. Um, just want to say thank you to everyone who made the, the first six days amazing. I'm, my children ha, are having a great year so far and, um, just thank you. I, it's an immense amount of work and from transportation to custodial to, to academics, it's been really great. So, so thank you for that.
Ms. Donahue?
I want to thank you for the great informative presentation. It was really, really well done. I'd also like to, uh, extend my appreciation for inviting me to the opening day ceremonies because I, I did attend them and, um, I did attend Smith Clove and Central Valley on their opening day as the kids were getting off their buses and that was, that was awesome. That was really awesome. I also had the pleasure of attending Central Valley's open house for second and third graders last night and tomorrow night I'll be at Smith Clove for the first graders, I believe. And I hope everybody's having a wonderful school year and have a lovely evening. Thank you.
Ms. Simmons?
I just want to mirror what Candace and, um, sorry, has said, uh, thank you to Matt and Julissa for the amazing, um, L's presentation. It's very informative in terms of what we're doing in the district for folks who have those language challenges and the multilingual learners. Welcome to all of the new members of the district. Looking forward to all the amazing contributions that you will make. I want to give a special personal shout out, because I'm being a little selfish today, to Mr. Berger and his team at the middle school. Every day I've dropped my little ones off at school because I have been having a hard time letting them get on the bus to go to school and come home from school. So just amazing transportation team as well. It's been an amazing transition, at least for my girls getting into middle school. They're very excited about having lockers. I didn't know that that would have been the thing that made them excited about middle school. But, um, for all of the educators who are making everyone's, um, transition to their new classrooms or their new school buildings, um, an amazing experience. Just a special thank you from the parental side of things for that. So thank you to everyone. Have an amazing school year.
Thank you. Ms. McClery?
Um, I want to say thank you to the present, presentation this evening. It definitely was very informative. I had the pleasure of visiting Sapphire, so thank you to Mrs. Turecki that I was able to see that morning. That is the place that I always want to go, is the younger buildings because they just love you and they're so happy to see you. And, you know, I have a senior this year that I have to beg to take a photo. So, you know, it's always nice to go to Sapphire and see the smiling faces. And while I was there, I don't believe I witnessed any criers. So kudos to that. I think it was, I think it was a good transition. I want to say thank you also to the football players that got up and spoke this evening. I think it's great. Hopefully they were successful in their public speaking because they did a great job. I, I do hope to see as many of the students out and welcome to Dylan. I'm happy to have you on the board and hopefully your voice will help with all of the students. Um, I did want to pass something along to Dr. Norman. Unfortunately, uh, this is a shameless plug also, so I apologize, but I, unfortunately we were not able to have the varsity girls captains attend the meeting this evening similar attend the meeting this evening similar to the football players because they had a game, which we did win. So kudos to the girls. But they would like to share this calendar with you, Dr. Norman, in hopes that you could attend a game that is coming up at home one time. And I welcome Mr. Judeece back. It was a pleasure to see him at the high school the other day. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Reynolds?
It's great to see all the smiling faces back. And just a friendly reminder as we start the school year, you know, if you need things, mainly for staff and faculty, like, we're here to help, right? Don't be afraid to reach out to the board. We all got emails. We're here to help. We can't help if we don't know what you need. So obviously, work it through your chain of command, but please remember, like, we're assets as well. So have a great day and see you around.
Thank you. Mrs. Robinson?
I echo everyone's sentiments and have a good night.
Dr. Koefman?
It's great to see everybody back. Even though the weather is outside, it's beautiful. We're still here. I I really, I'm really glad that we have a proactive way to address the ESL students' needs. As a former ESL student myself, I kind of blocked out a lot of that.
ESL?
English is a second language.
At his time.
My time, it was called ESL.
Cirque du Soleil.
Which was very difficult, challenging, and most of what had lacked guidance because the parents that come with you to this country do not have an ability to help you because they just don't know the system. So we are hopefully addressing the needs of the kids, but we also have to, in my opinion, provide guidance to the parents and help them guide their children properly as well. And everybody has, have a great evening.
Ms. Escobar, want to say something?
Have a great night. So I just want to begin by just really extending a heartfelt thank you to our community. It was a great opening. Our administrators, teachers, our team did a phenomenal job. And thank you for those that are in the audience and those that might be watching. I also want to thank the football team. I am a big football fan. I will be there. I will certainly bring my wife, and we will enjoy the event. So I look forward to that. Also want to acknowledge the other sports as well. I did have the pleasure of visiting our swim team. We have amazing athletes, and I certainly want to bring attention to them because they did a phenomenal job. And I look forward to coming to many more of these athletic events or any events that I'm invited to or not invited to. Thank you for that. And on that note, yeah, I want to take pause and ask us to just look to my right, to this board, and witness this beautiful artwork that was created by our senior art majors. They do a phenomenal job, and I've had the pleasure of getting into some classrooms and talking with teachers and students, and so many great things are happening because because of our team, our collective team. So great job to our students. Today, it was a special day, and I feel that I would be remiss if I didn't just bring some attention to it through through a statement. Many of us, you were, were around at different places when this event took place, but there are quite a few people that that weren't. And I think it's important on this day to acknowledge what it means and what it is. So I'd like to just close my update through the statement. September 11th, Patriot Day, is a day in our history that continues to hold deep significance, resonating with emotions of sorrow and loss. This was a tragic, tragic incident that impacts families of loved ones who were lost and survivors on a daily basis. Reflecting on this day also brings compassion and strength for our country and our community as we support those who continue to grieve. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Norman. Vice President, Cirella?
I just want to wish everyone, that's parents, students, and faculty, a successful year of learning ahead, and have a great evening.
Of course, I echo everything about thanking every one of you all, community staff, everybody that made this opening successful. The excitement and the commitment has been palpable. Very great opening back to our our school year. And then I just wanted to share that the board has been having our working sessions. We had one a few weeks ago where we met with a few of the directors, and then we we concluded with the rest of the directors tonight to understand a little bit more about what each of our directors does for our district. So thank you to all the directors for their very thorough presentations. And yes, the English language learner presentation was very informative. I believe that we have a lot more questions. We'll be hopefully discussing those in the near future. And yes, I'm very excited about football, about the football game Friday night. So thank you. And I don't know who organized the recognition night. Was it Ms. Capen? Did you do, thank you for that. And have a great night. Thank you so much, everyone. Okay. And we are adjourned. Motion, motion to adjourn into a board retreat.
Motion.
Second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.